... others to work together for the common goals. It does not establish a culture of fear and contempt. Leadership is a constant process that is ever-evolving. A leader accepts responsibility for all decisions, successes, and failures. A good leader builds the organization up by balancing the goals with how they treat members. A good leader must also be a good follower. Leaders must have a strong moral character, good self-discipline that puts the organization's needs before their own, have sound judgment, develop subordinates, lead by example, and get results. We have seen very little from the highest level of leadership in this school district. What we perceive as the superintendent has spent most of his time rallying of past cronies to protect his financial interests. We have seen Mr. Howe break the public for holding him accountable for abusing his power as an elected official. We have seen Mr. Lumm actively denying facts that there is a career-driven leadership, misconduct by administration, and actively support a school board candidate's campaign. All the issues the community has brought to your attention have not been properly investigated. To the best of our knowledge, you have done nothing. Mr. Howe and Mr. Lumm have stated openly they have a personal conflict of interest with regards to the superintendent in their undoubted blind trust. In accordance with state ethics laws, those individuals are not permitted to vote on anything regarding the superintendent. You have created a toxic leadership culture. This self-centered attitude has significantly adverse effect on the school district and the community. The superintendent has not built trust based on honesty and independence. He has created a culture of nepotism and quid pro quo. With the recent job posting, the question is not, who will be hired? The question is which relative of the school board or administration is already selected. You have lost our trust. Mr. Howe needs to remove himself and the board needs to hold their administrators accountable. Only then can we start to build back the trust. Thank you.
Next up will be Nathaniel Finkin.
My name is Nathaniel Finkin. I live on East Hazel Street in Jonestown. There are two topics I'd like to bring to the board's attention tonight. One is, and we saw a good bit of it tonight, and I want to thank the board for calling out the faculty that worked so hard in our schools and in our district to try to do the best they can for our children. The faculty of this district are our heroes. Full disclosure, I'm a very good one, so maybe I have to stop. But you know what my wife is doing right now? My wife is actually doing B3 grading. It's rare that my wife comes home before 5:00, and when she comes home after I make dinner, because she's too busy doing something else, open comes the laptop, and she continues to work. Many teachers in this district are working 50 to 60 hours a week. Why are they working so hard? Maybe it has to do with the fact that they are chronically under-resourced, that the technology of this district is not even close to their peers and neighboring districts, that their classrooms themselves are overcrowded. Maybe the problem lies in the fact that there is an adversarial relationship between the administration, perhaps the board, and the teachers. When the teachers in good faith offered a five-day furlough, a give-back of their compensation because the board was in dire straits, that was met by the superintendent cashing in over $60,000 of sick days within, I think, 10 days. How were the teachers supposed to act in good faith going forward after that event? The teachers haven't had a raise in two years, there's not a viable contract proposal on the table right now, and we had a former board member at the last meeting, who is not currently on the board, decry that we may have too many educators on the Board of Directors. God forbid we actually have too many educators on the Board of Directors. What could come next? Maybe actually having a principal for every school? Heavens to Betsy! Wouldn't that be something crazy? Our teachers are heroes. We need to offer them a fair contract, and we need to restore the trust between the teachers and the board and the administration. Without our teachers, we are nothing. Secondly, I know that there is an election coming up here on Tuesday, and there are some board members who are up for reelection. Where was the outrage from some of the board members over some of the recent events that happened in this district? Paint, for example, the dismissal of Gary Boucher. This move was largely decried by the district, and was opposed by the vast majority of the students, the faculty, and frankly, the public at large. Yet you were strangely silent. Not all of you, but some of you. Some of you frankly will be on the ballot this Tuesday. Your silence says one of two things. Either you're complicit and you endorse this move, or you frankly don't have the courage to stand up and publicly state your opposition. Either instance renders you unfit for service on this board, because we need courageous leaders who are going to speak their mind and represent the public interest. Why, some of you, after our district ranked 426th out of 500 this year, I don't know if that's an improvement or not, but it's embarrassingly ridiculous, is our superintendent, the highest-paid superintendent in the county? And by the way, after doing a little research, makes more money than the superintendents of Upper St. Clair, Mount Lebanon, and Anne Chad's Board, all of which are the top districts in our state. Again, I don't begrudge Don Bell. I like Don Bell. It's not Don Bell's fault, he was offered the money, okay? If you offer me the money, I take it too. Why did the board feel it necessary to overcompensate our superintendent, given the performance and condition of the district? Where is your outrage? Why do we buy new office furniture when we renovate this school, but we can't fix the sign the students see out front? What message do we give to our students when they arrive at this school every day, other than, "We don't care what your school looks like"? Frankly, where is the outrage? And for those of you that demonstrated it, the community thanks you, and hopefully you'll have a community support. For those of you that stood silent, your complicity or your silence is inexcusable, and you've been doing the public an enormous service by removing yourself from this institution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finkin. Next up would be Ken Hebbel.
My name is Ken Hebbel. I've lived in this school district for 60-plus years. I actually spent 31 years in the classroom at Moreton-Levin. So you might say, why after 13 years do you see me standing here? And, I must admit, it took some courage, but the simple answer for why I'm here is, I felt I had to be there. Too many questions and concerns were being posed to me that I didn't have answers for. And I spent some time recently, board functions, speaking to friends, neighbors, and guess what? I still have more questions than I have answers. I'm going to begin by sharing a simple story. We had a past administrator who used to use this phrase, "Schmucker me once, shame on you. Schmucker me twice, shame on me." And I'm going to include that mean a lot of us. I know we've heard a lot about the firing of Gary Boucher, so I'm going to use this example, only to pose several questions, and you be the judge. Is it just me, or are we getting schmuckered by this leadership? I would like to move on as a school district, but my mind keeps bringing me back to the same thing. And I have quite a few of them, and they all relate together at this point. First of which is, why after 14 years of favorable comments about his coaching ability did we suddenly fire him? I still haven't gotten an answer on that one. Why was some type of proper protocol not used in the way he was fired? How many people were actually involved in the decision to fire him? If it was a full-board decision, why after such a short period of time did we reverse our decision by unanimous vote and try and hire him back? Even at this point, folks, if we truly wanted him back, why did we first add criteria of improvement to his offer? Who actually wrote that criteria? Was it a board committee? And here's a big question. Why at this point has only one person publicly taken even partial blame for why and how all this took place? We all know that Mr. Howe didn't do this by himself. So, is it just me, or do we still have a problem here? Are we still getting schmuckered by this administration and this board again, and again, and again? It is my opinion that at board level, we seem to be awfully anxious to sweep this matter under the rug, hire a new coach, and I don't mean to say there's anything wrong with the new coach, I don't even know the gentleman, move on and hope that everybody just forgets that it ever happened. Try to tell Gary Boucher it never happened. Try to tell his players it never happened. And worse yet, try to tell students who are looking forward to playing for this man that it never happened. I would like to believe that you're slight at the end of the tongue, so I'm going to close with this thought. The schmuckering must end. I certainly hope that this community is ready to put their support behind a group of young, energetic, capable individuals who are showing some real leadership, and their willingness to step up to the plate. This team is running at a time when we desperately need some new direction in our leadership. I am personally encouraged by their willingness to serve, their transparency in stating who they are and what they stand for. Our community needs to be observant enough to see the need for some new direction on our school board. So, on May 19th, let's take the first step in taking back ownership of our own school district. Let's make this a place where, from the board, to the administration, to the teaching staff, to support personnel, to parents, and to all residents of this community, that we can, number one, show respect for each other, show some compassion and humility in our communications with each other, take ownership for our errors and our shortcomings, and try some transparency. It goes a long way. We might even find that we don't need to have an additional staff member to cover the right-to-know Let's truly work together to make this a district where our priority doesn't just save kids first, but that our decisions show. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hebbel. Next up would be Kristi Gensler.
I'm here for two things, once again. I really hate to, really hate to beat a dead horse on it, and everybody has addressed it so far this evening, but this is seeking a solution to a problem that has been here for a very long time, as said over and over again tonight. It has been almost three months since Gary Boucher was harassed and fired as head coach of the New Orleans basketball team. As far as I can tell, this board has neglected their responsibility by ensuring an investigation was accomplished in accordance with district policies and state laws. Also, this board has failed to actively investigate the unethical abuse of power that Mr. Howe did when he used his position to help fire Mr. Boucher in retaliation for his friend being removed as a junior high coach over a year and a half ago. This community has no trust or faith in David Howe, and he will not until he is no longer a member of this family. It is a common perception that Mr. Howe abused the power, and he will do it again. I attended the meeting last week and was very appalled by a few of the things that had been said, or that actually Mr. Howe had announced, his different things, like he was actually the president of the board again, which I feel he was set up for. I have seen this over and over again in numerous places and things, and I'm just calling it out the way it is. You don't have to like me, but I'm telling you the way it is. There are so many cliques in so many different places. And when Mr. Lumm asked me the other week, "Who side am I on?", I didn't know there was a side I told you. I didn't know that's the way they were playing here, but now I do. And to say whose side I'm on, it's not yours. It's not the new or N.L. leaders or anything, because I have seen them meet together, I have seen them talk behind closed doors, I have information that has been told to me that has been shared to others, and then Mr. Howe sits at the meeting last week identifying some of it. I, I, I'm just, the whole little bit of circle and clique needs to end. We are here together, there's no sides. We're here together, we're here for our students, for our children. This is a school district. This is ridiculous that it's even to this point anymore. To hear a radio announcer announce for certain sides and start ruckus amongst things, I taught people, shut the radio off! All it is is trouble. We need to work together, we need to show up as parents, we need to stand together, we need to back people, we need to start apologizing and mean. I have talked to, like I said, Dr. Bell last week, a couple of things. My question, Dr. Bell and board, is why are we creating jobs for wise children, friends, going off of who we know instead of qualifications, or attempts to have someone get further advanced if they will be your yes person? And I have confronted you about that several times, because it's, it's not just me saying it, it's the whole community, and it's time to end it. We have Mr. Boucher in retaliation with Mr. Howe, which needed to be stopped right at that point, not taken on. You know, not even to address or to take Mr. Neeharts into that situation. It, it could have all been resolved before it even got to that point. Our teachers, our coaches, those are our parents when we're not there. We need to respect them. As I said before, I have fallen short of that in my own lifestyle, and have regretted it by not only sitting back and looking at it, but by talking to my child and him saying to me, "Mom, they mean the world to me. They teach me things that you aren't teaching me." They're important to our children. They're very important. Our teachers, what they do in their jobs are important. They come home and they tell us what they do in their classroom time, and it's not always in the books. And finally, I'd like to end on, like I told you before, I am a business owner, I have multiple properties. This past week, I had a call for one of my properties, which I'm writing out, and I started to tell them a few that I had open, and they're like, "Oh, no, 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 not Jonestown. No way, not Jonestown." And I'm like, "Can you tell me why?" And they're like, "Well, because, you know, I went to school there, and I was switched by my parents when we moved over to Pine Grove." And we-
Excuse me, give me about 10 more seconds.
We went to Pine Grove and were switched over there, and I was behind. And so, they put me back in my grandparents' homes so I could graduate, because I was so far behind. Another incident is, and I was a complete stranger telling me that, another incident was a person that I know has moved to Annville and is doing work continuously just to graduate this year, because we are that far behind. This is not teachers' fault, this is our education program. And with my child being left behind for the three years that Mr. Bell sat there and told me across the desk two weeks ago-
I'm afraid we do have to stop unless you have one more second.
So I sat across from him, and he explained to me that we went behind for all these years, so we can now be ahead.
I'm sorry.
During that time, my son went behind, and so did a lot of your children.
And I'm really sorry, I am really sorry for that, y'all, but I do need to be fair to other people. Nate Erdman, please. And thank you, Kristi.
Hi, my name's Nate Erdman. I live in East Hanover Township on 62 Sherkstirch Road. I'd just like to talk a little bit about some of the things that were said and discussed at last month's board meeting. During Dave Howe's backhanded apology/ resignation speech, he brought up some ideas that he felt passionate about. He said that his attendance at after-school activities shows how he cares and supports students. Quote, "I've attended more extracurricular activities than any and all board members combined. There's no greater way to show this support that I care than by attending our students' events. All board members are given the exact same invitation, and I challenge you to ask the other board members how committed they are in showing their support with their attendance to our students' activities." Dave, I agree with you. Going to events is one of the best ways to show student support, but I do question why you chose not to include Dr. Bell, as one of the people that you're disappointed in for not meeting your attendance standard? After all, if attending school activities is important enough for you to chastise your other colleagues about, and attending after-school activities is one of the factors important enough to use on Dr. Bell's evaluation, then why didn't you express your disappointment with him also? What's good for the goose is good for the dam, for the gander, Dave. You also talked about a greater problem than the firing of Gary Boucher that really needs to be fixed. You said the process of firing two coaches needs to be cleaned up. It was all right if Gary fired two junior high coaches without any repercussion, but it's not all right for the A.D. to fire the head coach without any repercussions. Well, let me tell you, Dave, head coaches must be in total control of their program. They should be able to hire, fire, anyone they want, even if that's one of your friends. If I had a junior high coach in my program that refuses to do summer workouts, open gyms, run my basketball camp, I would fire him in a heartbeat also. That's why he was fired. I do express in my program as a head coach, and a coach that shows up three months out of a year is not going to help Viking Basketball reach its potential. You and Dr. Bell both felt it was Amy Sel's committee's responsibility to fix this hiring process. That's total garbage for you to, to insinuate that. If this athletic policy needs revamped, then the athletic director and the principal should have, should have been put to task in rewriting it. Amy's committee, as a whole, has very little expertise in athletics. Amy does act as a literacy coach, but the last time I checked, it has nothing to do with athletics. So like I said, the A.D. and principal should work together to make this policy. Then the super should look at, should look it over and suggest if there are any changes to be made. Final, this policy, policy should come to the board for final approval. By asking Amy and her committee to do this, I feel Dr. Bell is promoting micromanaging by the board. If I was the A.D., I'd be fired up about this, because I would want this policy to have my handprint on it. Not some committees, not some committee with two people that have no background in coaching at all, let alone running a team around athletic department. Lastly, Steve Lumm had a great point about being concerned about precedent being set that a vote would occur without discussion among board members. Very good point, Steve, and I understand where you're coming from, but I can assure you that no precedence was set with that motion from Amy Sel and Rachel England last month. I'm very thankful that both had the guts to see what occurred was wrong, and they tried to deal with it in a straightforward manner, the best way possible. You see, Steve, 20 years ago, precedent was set when Brian Wolf and some of his buddies decided to make a game-changing move without the input from all board members. Unbeknownst to half the board, they stood up in a meeting and decided they were going to fire Dr. Martin effectively. Our taxpayers then got to pay Dr. Martin's salary and the new superintendent's salary. It wasn't well thought out at all on their part, and it put quite a strain on our district financially. Ask Ms. Fixler, and she'll tell you how hard it was to dig ourselves out of that mess. So once again, Steve, the precedent you were concerned about set in last month is a moot point. Have no fear, it's been, it's been done before. In other news, I'd like to say that East Hanover had an awesome talent show last Friday. The kids were great, Mrs. Sherk and the teachers did a great job running it. It was a fun evening had by all. Mr. Wanger, Dr. Bell, you would be impressed, he did a great job representing the administration. And when he danced on stage to Pharaoh Williams' song, "Happy," he actually had quite a swagger to him. The May primaries next Tuesday. I'd like to wish my team five, Laura Snadley, and Sue Warner, all the best of luck. I'll always remember Mr. Dunmore telling us in government class at Moreton-Levin to, "Get involved with your local government." Mr. Dunmore didn't talk real loud, but that's what he always told us, "Get involved with your local government." I commend the six of you for sticking your necks out and trying to get involved in your school district. Thank you for your time. I'm Nate Erdman.
And our last speaker for the evening is Renee Arnold. Okay, I just lied? Another one just appeared magically.
I'm Renee Arnold, Jonestown. I just have just a small request. I don't want to bash anybody in any way, shape, or form, or anything. Our teachers, for all they've done, all the time they take. I ask that the teachers hand out the diplomas, no offense, in any way, shape, or form. They form a very special bond with these students. And I've talked to a bunch of teachers and a bunch of students, and they mean the world to them of coaches and teachers. Could say the last advice to these students, give them a, it would be a picture I'd love to hang in my home. It's something that would be a very memorable moment for all of them, special ones that have a very special bond. My child has a special bond with many teachers, and she's picked out three. I should love to have a diploma given to them. Many years that I've watched diplomas get handed out, I've been here a long time, but I've seen other schools give out diplomas from teachers to students. Kind of difficult, but if you can go with alphabetical, or they, you know, let the student pick a teacher, let the teacher pick his student. If they don't have one, you're welcome to host a handout of diploma. You can be their next in them to do the same thing. It would mean a lot to me, and mean a lot to the board. It's my last one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Renee, and McKenna Donlin.
I was planning on speaking, but I heard a couple of things that I wanted to address. Thank you for the teachers and parents that are so involved with the students. I want to thank you first, and also I want to address our education. I've been back and forth from N.L. and Hershey about four times because of my parents moving and such. I noticed when I moved to North Lebanon in fourth grade that I was already a kid. It was very obvious that the curriculum was behind at N.L. When I moved back to Hershey last year, my 11th grade year, I was way behind. I had to take double classes in biology and math in order to catch up for my senior year to graduate. I moved back last year, and, well, that was my sophomore year, I just moved back last year, my junior year, and was way ahead once again. I'm doing co-op this year, because there are many classes for me to take. There were AP, but such like psychology, I've already taken. So I feel like it's not fair that in middle school, that the students are, I don't, I've heard that it's changed, but I don't think it has, that they're separated in between the smart kids and the slower kids. That's not fair. When they get into high school, some, some of the students have already taken Spanish 1, and now they're behind, and they will never be, have the opportunity to take Spanish 5, which is a great opportunity. Lastly, I just want to say, and no offense to you, Dr. Bell, I don't know you very well. I was, I wasn't here last week, but I was at the last bigger board meeting, and I want to say that was the first time I've ever seen you since fourth grade that I've been a part of it now. I mean, I think you should be more involved with us somewhere, like come out to mini-thon or something, so we can see your face. I mean, you came to the tea party, but that wasn't anything involved with us. Like, you don't know us, and no offense, but I don't think you should have the privilege to shake my hand for my hard work and my teachers' hard work. Thank you.
All right, I have no more brief notes in front of me. We need to head on with the rest of our meeting. Thank you, everybody who did stand up and give us some input. Time to move on to the approval of the consensus agenda. Director Martell.
Hey. I'm with the consensus agenda. Second?
All right.
Okay, if not, please, Merrick, proceed to call roll.
Arnold.
Yes.
England.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Fixler.
Yes.
Sal.
Yes.
Howe.
Yes.
Lumm.
Yes.
Martell.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
All three.
Let's move on to the management committee. Again, Dr. Martell, please.
Management Committee, Ivan Hay.
Management committee, Ivan Hay.
Any discussion? No discussion, Merrick, proceed to call vote.
England.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Fixler.
Yes.
Sal.
Yes.
How.
Yes.
Blum.
Yes.
Martel.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Allen Fager.
Who want to be?
Any discussion? If not, vote please.
Gray.
Yes.
Fixler.
Yes.
Sal.
Yes.
How.
Yes.
Blum.
Yes.
Martel.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
England.
Yes.
Allen Fager.
Who want to see? Second?
Discussion? Proceed to vote.
Fixler.
Yes.
Sal.
Yes.
How.
Yes.
Blum.
Yes.
Martel.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
England.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Allen Fager.
Who want to be? Second, I'm so, yes, I'm so.
And Steve, you got a second? Any discussion? Not vote, please.
Sal.
Yes.
How.
Yes.
Blum.
Yes.
Martel.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
England.
Yes.
Gray. Fixler.
Yes.
Allen Fager.
Who want to be? Second?
Discussion?
Just what I said last week, but it'll be obvious in the middle.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
How.
Yes.
Blum.
Yes.
Martel.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
England.
Yes.
Gray.
No.
Fixler.
Yes.
Sal.
Yes.
An eight yes, one no.
Who want to move? Second?
Discussion? Proceed to vote.
Blum.
Yes.
Martel.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
England.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Fixler.
Yes.
Sal.
Yes.
How.
Yes.
Allen Fager.
Who want to be? Second?
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Martel.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
England.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Fixler.
Yes.
Sal.
Yes.
How.
Yes.
Blum.
Yes.
Allen Fager.
For those who are new to our meeting tonight, we actually discussed things fairly well last week. What I'd like to do now is, is to discuss H-I-J together. Then you can vote on each individual item.
So can I just have a second, so we can discuss in some way, shape, or form? Okay, now discuss it, please.
Any discussion on the budget?
Dr. Bell, my understanding is that there were some postings this week. Can you tell us what postings went up and how accurate next to what we have in front of us?
All the postings that went up were the previous positions that you knew as the board were made up a couple of months ago.
The most recent one that I have is where we had the halftime integrator and the halftime... And I had asked last week for an updated one, if I don't mind what was current.
No, that is halftime arts, halftime technology integrator.
The postings were, were halftime?
Yeah, it's the best of my understanding of what I have in front of me, but that's what, I'm pretty sure that happened.
Are you able to find it, Amy?
Oh, okay.
As Amy looks for that, I can maybe just inject some persons to save time. One is, the, like, the school, the music teacher center, were those included in all three budgets? As we talked about last week, and then the only difference was going to be the amount of taxes we were lacking.
The items you asked for last week were added to the budget. And H-I-N-J.
It, after a week of contemplating what was presented last week, and it was a bookeria of a lot of really neat things, I think, that our school district needs. But in talking with some respected members of other school boards that are both accountants and, and I just want to respect their, their opinion, a couple of things came to light. One is that if we do decrease the ending fund balance, it's kind of like if you don't, if you get behind your taxes, you have to take double next year. But in order for us to catch up, we're down a hundred thousand. That means a hundred thousand enters into next year's budget, we're a hundred thousand behind already. And if we wanted to get to the same place, we would have to basically make two hundred thousand. Is that correct? As far as I was told. So my concern is, honestly, the ending fund balance. My other concern is that if we don't have any kind of a, a fix on what the government is going to do, because yes, Governor Wolf has a lot of great ideas, I hope they certainly help our school district, but we've got a Democratic governor, and we've got a Republican House and Senate, so, you know, they're going to maybe come somewhere in between. Other school districts, one in particular, had a novel way of putting this in it. What they did is they had things that they wanted to put in, they put it in their budget, but it was only things that would go into effect if they actually got the funds from the state, so that we weren't, or they weren't bound by those things. If they came, great, they would have additional money, if they didn't, they're, they did not affect their budget. So I guess what I'm saying is that after a week, I'm kind of pulling down and saying, you know, we worked so hard to get where we are with our ending fund balance. I love the things, I'm all, obviously, I'm a teacher, I'm all about education and about our kids, and the things that were presented certainly will benefit them. But they're, they will not benefit anyone if we get into an ending fund balance like we've had in the past, where we've had to cut additional stuff. There's dismay, there's, you know, the community is on edge, you know, what are we going to cut? The students, the teachers, you know, all of that would have a negative, an adverse effect on the district. So I'm just calling for maybe some caution here, and none of these really address my, my concern, which is those additional things, if we have them in there, I'm, I'm, I think that at this point, we need to say we would like to do those pending state funding. So I'm just throwing that out there for discussion and see where, where...
Let me just provide clarification. In every one of those budgets that you have, the last sheet you have identifies the items that you requested. Number one is elimination paid apply. Number two is doing U.P.S.B.A. Number three is an additional music teacher. And number four is additional legal fees. Those are the four things you requested. Those are in H-I-N-J.
Hey, and what I'm saying is that those are all great things to have, but until we get state funding to, to ensure that our ending fund balance does not go lower than it is currently, I, I would not, I would not support that budget at this point. I would say let's entertain those and put them in if the state funding does in fact materialize.
Dr. Bell, you, you gave that out, this was stress summary that was done. Do you do that with us before we vote for a new vice? Certainly. Part of the discussions and things that we normally do, and these are done by an independent group, not our group, these are auditors, because I too have listened to some people talk about the stress or distress from a financial standpoint that this district is in. I want you to look at where we were in 2012, which shows significant gain in relationship to fiscal stability into 2015. And I'm talking about the first page graph chart on the left-hand side, and then a few copies if anybody else wants to see them. You'll see in 2012 where we were, which they define as four different levels of fiscal stress. Those are their terms, not mine. Significant fiscal stress was in 2012. It was upgraded to moderate in 2013. We were upgraded again at the end of last year. And finally, the proposal in looking at at the end of this year is what they call no decision. And that means good financial shape. So I want to make sure in two fronts, that you understand where we're at in the proposal, and what we need to do from not just a budgeted amount, but an audited amount, which doesn't take place till next year. And just to remind you that the district is not in significant financial stress, and that's not my terms, that's theirs. This is provided for you so that you can see what we've done in a three-year period of time. And the decisions that you've made over that three-year period of time. Every one of the supporting pages document how they came to that conclusion. There's numerous graphs, there's numerous charts, but it shows the significant financial gains we made over a three-year period. Thank you.
Back to, back to my question, mate. I would like to know what was posted this week. Or clarification.
I think if what you, Sue showed me what you were looking at, you were looking at the, what we would refer to as a shot teacher. That's industrial technology.
Question with Merrick, one. There was also one that was posted that, that did say full-time integrator, technology integrator, and music or arts. So can you explain how that position would be analyzed, without one...
Half and half. It's a full-time position, we advertise the positions as full-time because they're full-time positions. They're not two half-time positions. The goal was hanging there.
So it's one person?
Correct.
So they need to have the certifications of both?
Correct, and we had discussed that before, and during that time, those are not necessarily required, they're requested, that's what we're looking for.
Right, no, I'm just making sure that I, that I...
Sure.
And then the learning support teacher elementary was posted as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then the ones that haven't been posted, which I would think will be, depending on the interview schedule, will be the grade one class size reduction, elementary principal in the secondary system.
We don't post by individual grades, we post elementary position.
Okay, so they're in elementary?
Yes, that's posted.
That is posted.
Yes, the elementary position.
And then other of the replacement and changes, and what we discussed last week that we have in the three options, there's nothing else that's been added?
No. This, all the supporting documents, very similar to what Dean does every, every month, all the supporting documents. Any change would be overstated.
And then I'd ask a question today, I think it was just today. You know, I get so many emails right now, I honestly do forget who sends what and where it's done. But there was an email a while back that said we might lose the Pennsylvania State Police, I mean, every school district could lose a P.S.P. as, as what we, the goal that we're using right now as a school resource officer.
Correct.
So I'd ask you if we were going to be losing that, do we have that already built into the budget of what we did?
Yes, we do, and there's numerous grants out there for, you know, call them S.R.O.s, school resource officers, or school police officers, S.P.O.s. And I've been in contact with the Department of Education, and they actually were kind of surprised that the state police are no longer doing that. They were thankful for the letter that I sent them, because they were not informed that that was happening across the commonwealth. And they explained why. But in addition to that, we've looked at a variety of other sources, and we continue to look at additional sources before the beginning of the next school year. And the Department of Education said that they would encourage us to put a grant to pay for that position as well, but it is covered in the budget. I'd like a couple of questions. Just for clarification, because I'm not sure I understand who's going and what they're hiring. We're losing two communication arts teachers. Is that for the hiring? I believe that we're, we have one leaving and one retiring. Yes. Want to move one to probably middle school, the E.S.L. teacher to middle school, possibly? That's the reassignment. Okay. Who's going to cover E.S.L.? Again, those are the reassignments for special education, special needs E.S.L. in that area, as well as Spanish and E.S.L. in that area. Alright, you can pull up the name. Those people. The Spanish teachers. They're going to play E.S.L. Right now, that's the request of replacing that position for the Spanish position. I guess my, my concern is, is how are elementary kids going to become in contact with Spanish teachers to do that E.S.L.? No, that's the elementary, special needs. We're removing staff from elementary E.S.L., who's moving? I guess what I'm saying is, we're losing two English teacher, one goes to middle school, but we're hiring a tech ed teacher. And we're losing two English teachers. And who's still in the tech ed position? The tech ed position is a new position. Yeah, who's still in? I don't know, we just advertised it. I'm not sure I understand the question. The tech ed position, if I, if I saw the posting correctly, is for business, the computers? I don't recall what that certification is. It's on the website.
Technology education position in the annual P.A. certification in tech ed is required with experience in the curriculum.
Which is now a position we did not fill seven years ago, correct? Will this help overlap our middle school?
Definitely.
I mean, this is going to be a secondary, I believe, right? That position would cover Pete Thilo and, and it'll be, it'll be basically eight through twelve, hopefully expanding into the middle school. But that's where it's at, I mean. I'm just concerned that, I understand it's possible to need to have a tech ed teacher, but I'm more concerned about losing, I think, if I'm adding correctly, we have a net loss of two communication arts teachers. I, I might get one, one, I guess, but I'm not sure how we're losing two.
Oh, we're losing two. Losing two, and then one is, replaces where we're actually, one is being moved, so we're...
And that opens up E.S.L., but then we're doubling up on E.S.L. because obviously somebody's going down to elementary to E.S.L. So either we're still losing teachers, or somebody gets moved, some? No, we're not, we're not moving, the E.S.L. in, in the secondary is with Spanish E.S.L. Elementary is special needs E.S.L. So we're not doing, we're not having somebody do all that.
So what about that, the one communication arts or English, whatever it is? We're going to be down...
We're going to be down one teacher, does that make the class sizes of communication arts or English larger? Is that, is that a concern?
Yeah.
The secondary level, I had a discussion with Josh. From a teaching perspective, we had the majority of them at five periods a day, and we were adding four technology, or I'm sorry, construction, or Keystone classes. So based on what the current staff works at, seven teaching, or half of the current staff, about seven teaching periods a day, that's not a significant increase in that department.
I think it raises the question as well, if we're having dual roles as a learning support teacher and ESL at the elementary staff, and someone who teaches ESL and also Spanish as a language at high school. I don't know, but that's just practicing.
I would agree, I mean, if you look at ESL, ESL should not be taught as a foreign language as far as, you know, the fact that we have a Spanish teacher teaching that gives us no benefit, in fact, it is a hindrance, because if she goes to use Spanish while she's doing English as a second language, that is not the way it is supposed to be taught. It's not the way you integrate language into a new language learner. So I was kind of concerned, I heard that moving the Spanish teacher.
Not as a second language, it's Spanish.
But even, yeah, I mean, it shouldn't have, you're not teaching English as a second language by saying, okay, this is how you say bread in Spanish, and now this is how you say bread in English. You immersed in, in English language, that is the whole crux of why we have English as a second language.
Josh, how many, how many secondary ESL kids do we have? Uh, high school? Lesson 10. Let me do that there. One?
And those, and those students all deserve the best education we can give them, whether there's four or five of them or however many. In my group, there are five ESL students in the entire school district. They have a full-time ESL teacher that goes there, I should say full-time, one and a half days he goes to Williams Valley. The teacher's three or four, I talked to him about, you know, the number of students. You're not talking about, you're talking about a student who needs intensive instruction in order to get them. Imagine if every word that you heard, you did not understand, and you've got to bring this child up into a language, because they're not getting the support, only because it is their second language. So yes, there are not a lot of students, but these students need so much more attention. It's almost like having, you know, a special needs student where you need that really intensive instruction, almost a one-on-one instruction for those children.
We are also federally mandated by Tech 3 to provide the best.
But that was a lost topic. I just, that was a concern. We were really honing in on this idea of having a language teacher, teaching ESL, like that was a benefit, maybe it was just unintended, but to me, those two are totally different, different teaching styles, teaching a foreign language and teaching English as a second language.
Should the focus be on what the teacher certified? So if someone's ESL certified and certified in business or English or Spanish, they're dual qualified to teach, teach both, and so that shouldn't be a disadvantage because somebody has multiple certifications versus just one certification. So I don't see why a teacher with ESL certification could teach a part of the day with ESL students and then teach whatever else they're qualified or certified to, that they'd be a great teacher doing both because they're qualified.
And I would agree with that, David. What I'm saying is that the perception here is given that we have a Spanish teacher that they want to teach English as a second language. My impression of the way that that's presented is, I just want to clarify that those two don't necessarily have anything to do with each other.
I agree, I think ESL teacher could be, could be an industrial arts teacher, it could be any discipline, it's just somebody that has the passion to go that to school or in your undergrad to get that certification to be ESL, it could be, it could be any other discipline. And I think, I think a lot of teachers have made themselves more marketable and more valuable to different school districts by having multiple certifications.
That doesn't mean that we pilot a lot of teachers. I feel for the elementary teacher that has to balance the case load of I D A and I Ps with ESL and federal regulations and the needs of two very diverse populations of needs.
Yeah, I think that's a definition versus if somebody qualified to teach two different classes, like...
And I'm not saying that they're not qualified, I wasn't, but my concern was that somehow, that, that, I just wanted to make the, make the case that teaching English as a second language is a whole other way of teaching than, than, than teaching a foreign language. And so that the actual, that she teaches both, if she's qualified in both, then as long as those are separated, great. I'm not saying she wouldn't be, I just wanted to make it clear to everyone that, that we should take this English as a second language very seriously. It is a topic that, yeah, these kids are the ones that are forgotten because, well, you know, they can't speak, because they can't speak with our language. And so we need to put resources into making it work a lot. And if this teacher is, and I don't know who, if this teacher is qualified and she has those experiences, great. I'm just making the point that we really need to take this seriously.
Only thing I'm very concerned about when I look at some of the positions is how the job positions were written. So the thing will be filled by people that had those specific requirements.
It's not a combination of a technology integrator and a half-time elementary art or music, that's two.
And that's the one position that makes me more nervous than somebody, I mean, somebody with ESL and Spanish. I mean, for me, that seems like a logic combination, or like, you know, business and accounting, or, you know, there's certain things that go kind of keen, but I'm jolly. But that, you know, the tech position and a musical art position, I think that, that's a, that's a very unique hope that you get that right person combo. And I think, you know, the perception, at least what I thought I heard tonight, was that we're a little bit, we're behind in technology, so to me, I think we should invest in a full-time person in that area. Because starting next year, seventy-five percent of our classes are going to have some kind of device to use in a day, and if you made me teach a class that I'm qualified to teach in, using the computer seventy-five percent of the day, I'm probably going to need a little bit of assistance. That doesn't mean that I'm not a great teacher at what I teach. It just needs, at my age, I need a little help in integrating technology and how to use that in class and what, I mean, people work, say, get this app, you can do this with that. I know an app is, but, you know, I didn't know it could do certain things. So I would like to see us, since we've invested so much time and energy, and in another year, we'll have a hundred percent of our students having devices. Use those devices to help kids learn the way they want to learn and help and assist teachers to get that extra bit out of how they could use, use the device in their classroom. And I would, I would like to see that be full-time, and that's kind of where I was headed last, last week, where I still think music is an extremely valuable class that we stripped away due to the fact that we had a music teacher retire and we didn't replace. And maybe for once in all my life, I am the optimist in the group versus the pessimist in the group, and think that we can take a leap and bound and add that music teacher this year. And Glenn, I'm not opposed to your idea, because a lot of my assumptions are based on what I'm hearing from the Lebanon School District that says they think their, their bank will own fifty percent of what, what the governor's budget is. So if we can come up to some number that if we get, you know, that extra bump that we're supposed to get, and we have zero in our budget related to the governor's budget, so if we get a certain number, a certain dollar amount, that hopefully we are willing to take a risk and invest in our kids and not hold that, that money back. I mean, it's a balancing act between, you know, where we're going, and we've been focused as a board to spend much more time trying to rebuild our nest egg, and we're there. And I think it's time that we can still build the nest egg or still have a healthy reserve and still invest, invest in our kids. And for me, I think music is one of the first places we need to look to restore, and that, that's why, that's why I opted, opted to throw that out on the table last week.
And I think I said I did agree with that, I mean, the idea of, of the music, I mean, there's so many benefits. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the concept of this being prudent. I guess I'm a little unshy, because...
And I'm not disagreeing with you either, Glenn, because if the governor's budget is zero, then, then it's not a good move either. You know, so if we get something from the governor, I hope we can suddenly invest that in our children.
And I would be all for that, that if we got something, you know, to save. But as far as the way the budget is living here, I don't know that I would agree with it, just because it's assuming stuff that I would be, I'm pretty much resigned to, I don't want to see us go above the saw. And so any, anything that we have, that would take the biggest chunk if we don't go against this.
I mean, sorry, you're for J.
No, because, only because, I'm in support of J, but J includes all of the things. I am saying, I'm in, I'm in support of J, no exceptions included, and with the provision that if we get money from the state, those things that we've added on our wish list become reality.
So you're, you're for number one on J? Now, that, that would knock us back, we're not going above the saw, I believe, the negative three ninety-six?
Crazy number.
On the, on the changes in the 2015-16 budget in graph six to graph six A, no exceptions included?
Yeah, and we would take that off.
I'm just...
Yeah, I want to keep one, but not, at this point, not additional ones.
Okay.
I would, I would wholeheartedly agree to all of them if we get funding from the state.
So my question is, how much money do we need to get from the governor's budget or the state's budget for you to be for two, three, four, and five?
At a minimum, I'd say that, that it covers it.
So dollar for dollar?
At, at a minimum. I mean, it'd be nice to make it, to get half to it and half to put in a reserve, that would be ideal. But I don't have the magic number that I've thought about. I'm just, I just know that I don't want to spend that money on those things until we actually get some money from the state.
And we're not going to know that until December?
Well, we'll know before the summer.
November? Sorry. I'm just making the point that it's a little too late to put a music teacher in halfway through the school year?
Even in a Rendell budget where the state got in a lot of fights. Now, you got, you got to remember that those state workers didn't get paid when there wasn't a budget. So you're telling me that Harrisburg's going to wait till November to not pay state workers? And things are going to be good in Harrisburg?
I'm just saying if we don't have a soon, and my definition of soon is more like July, do I want to go out on a limb and hire a teacher?
I, I, I think you can, I agree, we don't want to hire a teacher in the middle of the year, but I...
So it's not asking for...
I, I would like to see some historian say, what's the last date that a budget ever passed in Pennsylvania? And I bet you, you're not going to get into very, I, I think by the August board meeting, there will be a budget, and we'll know exactly how much money we have. We may have to scramble at that point to hire somebody, but if that's what the consensus of this group believes, and that's what's best for the kids, then I think, I think we should, I have no qualms with Glenn's idea. I mean, back on the napkin, it's about a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. I don't have a problem to see if we get two hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the government with your idea of putting half of it in reserve and half of it investing in our kids, and that's the balance between the taxpayers and, and our students. I think that's very prudent, Glenn.
I'd like to bring the discussion back to H I and J, because we were asking last week, we did, we made a general consensus, but we did not necessarily approve, took some in the block that we would like to do. But what we're, H I and J is, and the motions that are on the floor, and we'll vote on them separately, is how much of an increase do you want? Since it's tentative at this point in time, basically what we need to do is we need to decide, do we want all the exception, half the exception, or none exceptions? And that's it, because we can discuss this other stuff next month if we really want to. We don't need to make this decision on how we're going to put this in, because everything that we're talking about is end fund balance reduction. That's it. So we vote on H I or J. And then we can discuss next month whether we want a full-time...
But we need a budget that we will have on display for the public for thirty days. So if Glenn and I want something that says that we'll do this if we get a certain dollar amount from, from the governor, I think that would be the budget that we would want to put on display, so...
And does the approval of H I or J regardless mean that a posting will go up for me?
And I'm looking at, we're still having some discussion on postings that already...
Right, well, that's why I'm asking, because postings were up for this, so why wouldn't postings be up for this? I think that's important to note.
And with the discussion we've had on the postings, are our postings correct the way we want them to be?
Have we approved the postings as a posting?
You, you approved the positions, the way they're posted, the way we have them. Yeah, the way they were on that...
What's the thinking on music, music teacher, if you're certified, music teacher and tech teacher, is that something?
There was a concern that we needed a technology integrator. Forever we've been taken away from music slash art.
Are those people out there, I mean, are the people out there?
I don't know, that's why, that's why it's not required unless we're a blessing. And if you remember in the previous meetings, I had those discussions, that could be a problem, but we were going to look for first. If it's a problem, yeah, absolutely. So it's definitely something that's, that's hard. I don't even know if it exists, but those were the things that we had said and you had said, and you had promised as a board years ago, when those positions were taken away, that those would be the first ones that we're going to bring back.
So we could have...
If you want to make them both standalone positions, that's fine.
We could do that.
Doesn't matter to me. Then you have to answer Glenn's question of taking away from the end fund balance.
I would rather see standalone positions for both in the middle.
I would rather see standalone positions for both in the middle.
Why do you think we're going to want one of all?
No, no question. And I love the idea of music teacher, I've been pushing, talking about that for years, so I would be in favor of the standalone, and we ought to try to tip that in.
I think administratively, we love standalone positions, but we can't, I'm just telling you, I would love to have those things and those positions, I just have to keep you reminded of what your financial, where we've come from. We have made significant financial gains over a few years. Don't have any problem with adding those positions. Administratively, I'm sure these guys are salivating when you're saying make it for ten, so am I. Or standalone, you should say, not for ten.
I have a question. Sometimes it helps me work backwards. What do we want in need or end fund balance to be? I think that would be easier to say, okay, we have to have this much in reserve, than that helps us to know how much we can send.
To maintain this.
What's that?
To maintain this.
Right, right. So...
Hundred percent, hasn't that been a number that we can get over the years?
Yeah, the auditors have always told us eight, fifty, fifty.
Right now, the proposed budget would, if we take, I believe, all the exceptions, kind of the right one up here, if I'm correct, um, gives us, here it is. Gives us an end fund balance of eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, as opposed to what we came off of this year, basically almost one point four million. So even if we don't add anything back and we take the whole exception, um, our end fund balance is still down, from one point three to eight hundred thousand. Half exceptions, we're down to six, sixteen, six hundred and sixteen thousand. And if we do low exceptions, down to four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars approximately, four hundred and eighteen thousand. I believe if we added in what we were talking about, with the music teacher, legal fees, P S B A, and eliminating pay to play, we were down to about three hundred and forty We have to approve it next month.
Well, we have to pass a preliminary budget.
But the budget, does it have to be posted for thirty days before we can approve it?
I think the newest point, yes, it needs to be public.
But sometimes we can't change it next month.
Yeah, you can, but you have to have something tonight.
Yeah, you have to pass something tonight.
Well, I understand.
You can change it in June.
Right, well, that's what I've been saying. So I think what we need to do is we have I, H, I, and J. We just need to decide what saw we want. It's basically what we're looking at.
I think we need to do it in two steps. I agree with you, we need to pick which tax amount we want, and after we get over that, then we should put into the budget what of the other things we want in there and publish that for thirty days and give the public time for input and the board time to think about that. And I really do like Glenn's idea of saying, if we get so much from the governor, we're going to spend so much on the items and correct.
I always modify it later. So much of the labor point, we need to make a decision on H I and J.
So you're saying the only options we have tonight are H I and J? When the public says we need to have more transparency, when we have, when there's a strong likelihood that we're going to change, I think we owe it to the public to put up the budget that we're most likely going to pass next month, and if there's changes made, let them be honest changes, but to put something up tonight that you know you're going to change differently next month isn't being very transparent to the public.
I don't think it's not being transparent, I think it's not knowing everything. But if you want a decision, in fairness to Matt and the purpose of the school, to take, even though I have reservations, I would choose I. I would cross out the music. Teacher at this point in time, because that's the largest expenditure to wipe out the end fund balance. I think it's important that we remove the pay to play, that's insignificant really, but the parents that get hit with it, it's a big deal. I think we should join P S B A, and I think we need to increase legal fees. There, does that help?
Very much so. And is that your proposal for...
That's my proposal. That's my proposal. I don't, you know, you guys, I'm only one and nine. But I understand, I understand where Matt's coming from, I understand where elderly people in this community are coming from, but I also understand where the school district's coming from, and that's why I took the middle road.
And what your proposal does is add sixty seven thousand dollars to the end fund balance you see in the budget comparisons.
So if we want to post something, and again, we can, we discuss this next month, but you're correct, we need to post something, I think that that's a reasonable assumption at this point in time.
And, let's throw it out there, can we do two choices, do an I and a J, that the only difference between the two would simply, why is this thing going on? Wow, okay, what I'm saying is, if we have, can we do I with those, you took out the music teacher, kept the P S B A? Keep the same things that we had, you had in your proposal for I, and also have the option to vote on J? Because that would do the same thing if it was how much Dr. Bell, sixty seven thousand, that would also increase the four hundred and eighteen thousand.
By sixty thousand.
That would also do the five hundred thousand dollar end fund balance with no saw, with nothing above the saw. Just what we have, still pretty low.
And Glenn, I'll support that.
I like the proposal.
So you're talking, eliminate pay to play, add the S B A, add the increase in legal fees, but use I and J?
Yes. So it's two that we can vote on, right? This is the choice.
And they still already have a halftime music teacher, are increased, so we are gaining halftime music teacher, just to be clear.
Well, that's a whole... So what if we can't find somebody?
Well, everybody out there, be following.
Still full time position.
So we changing the job description? If we're going to do it, we sure should do it now while the new first choices are being snatched up.
So what you're saying is to take the tech and...
I'm not telling, I'm asking.
No, what I'm saying, what you're saying, you just said what you're saying.
I mean, this might be a pie in the sky looking for that kind of job description, so we're just...
They take one of those options out, they just make, there was solid, we don't hire one teacher for that position, but only have them do one specialty.
That's my question.
That would be something that, okay, just wanted to make sure that we do something.
I mean, it's like me being looking for a Latin teacher for the last twenty years, as much as I want one, I'm not going to get one. Who wants this? So you keep advertising, you can advertise for Spanish Latin or Spanish German, or some of that, does that kind of person exist? Because I'd love to see a Latin teacher over my computer now.
Okay, let me ask you this, is anybody in favor of H?
I am.
Wow, the word on her head. I sat as a teacher way back when, and no mileage was ever raised, okay, and then you lose it that year, the next year, the next year, the next year, the next year. So I'm in favor of what Dan said. I think raising it at sixty seven thousand, that means next year we still get the sixty seven thousand again, which, you know, in my brain is more money, okay? I hate raising taxes, I do. You know, my mom lives on social security, that's it. She pays the taxes, and I hate it. But sixty seven thousand dollars, okay, to sit here and not raise it, you know, no exceptions, I just think that's wrong. I just do. I'd rather see a bigger end fund balance, and then down the road, you know, the wise people can say, hey, we don't need it this year, we don't need it this year. Do I want a music teacher? Absolutely. You know, I got a second grade nephew that he waited till January to get music class, and then the first music class, it snowed, and he was all upset, okay? He's played the drums since he's been four years old. It's important to him. But I agree with Dan, I like his thoughts there, and I think I'm in favor of H.
I think I really, being on this board for the last almost four years, and doing this over and over again to our community, and I, we had to, we had to, in order to get out of the nest of work that we were in because of tax decisions. But I don't, and I hear what you're saying, I think, I think we have to give a break to the people of our community as well. So I guess I just feel like in a year where we wouldn't absolutely have to do it, I think giving them a break would be, would be really helpful.
And it's still a tax increase, I mean, you're not going above the saw, but it's still a tax increase, so we're still getting hit regardless. And it makes a big, it's a big amount. You have a small house, you may not be, you know, it may be small, but when you were assessed at, you probably was assessed at, it could be double or triple what someone that maybe has a little small house in quarter acre. It's a huge amount, believe me. Enough, I mean, we need to stop this. Stick with J, and give the people a little bit of a break, they're still getting taxed. I call for a vote. If you say that we have to advertise this, so the end fund balance will change depending on which of the four items that we have in that. So what are you calling the vote on?
I mean, my choice is J with Glenn, and I think Glenn, you said that you're good with item two and maybe, which is the elimination of pay to play? And item three, the P S B A, eliminate number four, which is the music teacher? Add number five, which is the ten thousand dollars for legal fees?
Including, sorry, including legal fees, the pay to play, P S B A.
Yeah, the only way you...
At this time, it's not like we're going to put it at this time.
I mean, we may or may not know more about the governor's budget in order to, I doubt it, but you know, this is...
All right, let me, is everybody in general agreement with those three items? All right, so what we're going to vote on is H, and then I, and then J. And each one of those proposals will have those three items in it. That will give us a more accurate posting for the end, what the end fund balance will be. Does everybody understand that? All right, I'm moving on to H.
No, I'm just listening.
I'm moving on to H.
No, I'm just listening, thank you very much. I can go home and be refreshed.
Everyone seems to be in agreement that we eliminate the music at this point, so we take out pay to play, we add in P S B A, we add in legal fees for all three of the items.
That's what...
That will give us, there is an approximation where the end fund balance will be for public disclosure. So the only thing, we're all pretty much agreeing with that, the only thing that we're really talking about is whether we take any exceptions or no exceptions or half exceptions. So item H is, we take all the exceptions, which will reflect a point five, six, five, nine mill increase. Item I will reflect a point four, two, four, eight mill increase, that's one half the exceptions, and no exceptions will be a point two, eight, three, seven mill increase. About three tenths of an increase between item, uh, less, between item H and item J.
And then inherent in your motion...
Put them on.
...to this, what do we actually say? And that inherent motion, that what we were seeing, we're just waiting to pack.
Although, because the budget that we published will have to show the reduction in the end fund balance by, will actually increase by taking off pay to play.
I'm looking at, does the motion need to improve this?
You need to have an amended motion that includes item two, three, and five from the previous list. You can add that to item H, I, and J, but that's your...
Your items are two, three, and five. Our discussion tonight has been one, two, and four, so just the...
You can keep track of that. Okay, I know, I think I know what you want.
Yeah, we're taking off pay to play, we're adding in P S B A, and we're adding in the increase in legal fees. So we're calling that one, two, and four for tonight, because that's what we've been discussing.
So instead of an amendment, I, J, can we have K that we put for...
Yeah, did you just say taking out pay to play?
Yeah, I'm not going to charge people.
Yeah.
So my question was, rather than having the amendment to make it look cleaner, till we're done at the end of the day, can we do a K that includes our...
Okay, I make a motion that we eliminate H I and J right now.
Side up.
I didn't say that.
You didn't say it. Mary, could you go? Okay, and who's side to that?
I did.
This is to just...
This is to just
Eliminate H, I, and J.
Mary, can you read?
Yeah.
The amendment, please.
The what?
K.
We have a, we're eliminating H, I, and J, we need to vote on.
Oh, okay. What are we voting on? Eliminate H, I, and J. All right, Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fitzler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How? Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
All in favor.
I make a motion that we add item K to replace H, I, and J on the agenda. And item K will have the wording of item, previous item J with taking out pay to play, adding in P S B A, and adding in a legal fees. Everybody understand that? Second that, or make a suggestion? Everybody agree with that?
So, for clarification, J is no exceptions. Right?
So our new, just to make sure, our new K is J with those three things that we want, without
No exceptions was two, three, five. Pay to play, P S B A, and legal fees.
Pay to play. Everybody's clear on the motion, Mary, why don't you just read just, make sure we cover it?
Okay, the motion will be voted on with, um, item K would now be J, no exceptions, but you're taking out, um, pay to play, the, um, P S, you're adding the P S B A and the legal fees. Taking out the music teacher. When you say taking out, we're not adding it in. It's gonna be like that, right?
Can I ask us a question? We don't have a contract with teachers. If we ever get a contract with teachers, do we have that money in this budget?
And he's shaking his head, no. Thank you, Bonnie, for calling that to our attention.
I'm just saying, I, I know where your guys are going, and I understand. You know, I hate it too, but I don't wanna be bad next year, because I have two more years saying, okay, we don't need this teacher, we don't need this teacher, we don't need this teacher. And then we have the community scream at us again.
You're very good, and I'm very, very, very hopeful that we're gonna be getting a contract.
So am I.
Here.
I, I want ten thousand contracts, you know, I was a teacher for many, many years. But, no exceptions, where's that money gonna come from? The government.
I saw really what we're doing right now, so we're discussing item K before we vote on. Any other discussion on item K? I, I won't support item K, because I don't think that the increase is enough. And I, and I understand where Matt's coming from, but that's why I selected the middle road, but I, I absolutely understand Matt's opinion, and that's all I'm gonna say.
This is more contractual thing, but, um, yeah, I know, you know, we can say that, what, what would be an expected increase in our budget for that contract? Until we get the contract, figure how we're gonna
I would agree with Bonnie, you would need a item H, if you would need item H, do you want to have a contract? Money available at least towards a contract. And, um, K, I would probably go with I. I feel like we should have at least half the exceptions.
See, I, I, I would say the same thing, I, I could even live with I. I can't live with J. I just can't, and I'm just, I'm, you know, if we get a contract and we knew exactly what we were gonna give, money-wise, but we don't, you know, we're, we're a known answer, and I don't like that feeling.
Do you want to amend item K?
Probably vote K up or down, and then vote it down, and that's good.
Well, I think that what's appropriate is you make an amendment to change item K, and then you go on.
I, I agree that we have increased so much over the last several years. And however, I do think you need to build a budget, and there's a lot of unknowns. So, my original was to support I, right in the middle.
And half of expecting what Wolf might promise was, how much?
Give her probably now, half? Half of things?
Okay, we have item K on the table. It's a modified J. Everybody understands that? This discussion, now that they really wanted item I, so modify I, not modify J. So, I will make a motion to modify K to half exception. We'll second, and we vote on that, if it doesn't, if the amendment doesn't pass, I'm gonna back to the original K. That's how all the rules works.
Second.
Any further discussion? Everybody understand? If you vote yes, we're at item I, basically. Everybody understand that?
Yes.
Okay, you got it.
Everyone consent? You're saying, because you're the one who really counts there. And it was seconded by?
It's still an exception stage, or
For a nanosecond.
A nanosecond, yeah, I just think this, you know, we should give a little more time to think, I just, the teacher contract is, and that's just a roll the dice, it, it does make me pause. I'm not sure which way my eyes is, it certainly, certainly concerns me.
That we don't have enough money to set aside, or be more specific?
It, that is, that nowhere in here is that taken into account. And if, if, you know, I've heard you say several times, so, and I'm optimistic with you, that we're hoping that we will get, this is the year we were gonna get a contract, but we haven't we said one thing, so our budget doesn't say the same thing, but it says, no, we're not gonna get a contract, because we haven't figured any, any amount
You're right, you're telling the
to adjust for that, so that, that kind of certainly, I don't know.
The amended motion on the table has been seconded, we changed to half exception from no exception. Can you call a vote?
England? Gray?
Right now, I'm just standing, I'm gonna stay with my original note.
Fitzler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
No.
Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Warner? Yes. Arnold?
The amendment has not passed.
Was it five-four, I lost track, five-four?
Five-four, I thought.
Five-four, that the amendment has passed.
Passed, so item K has been amended to a one-half exception. Now, I move the amended number K, letter K. Second. Everybody understand what we're voting on? Item K is now item I, with the three things in it.
What we just voted on was to amend it, not to actually pass.
Amy, Sal.
We voted to amend it, I mean, I guess I missed a part there.
Because I voted, I voted to turn down I.
Right.
Did you vote no?
Yeah.
Did you remember your
How did you vote like that, though?
You did. You did, except that you lost, so it was five-four. So I, so, so now the motion on the table, listen, the motion, listen everyone, the motion on the table is item K, which is now a one-half exception with the three things. One, two, and four. Right, everybody understand that?
Yes, yes, do it.
Anybody in further discussion?
I, I, I think you need to reconsider your vote, definitely. Obviously, your taxes haven't gone up enough. Mine is probably not close to two thousand in probably the last two to three years, which is huge. I'm at a point where I can't afford it anymore.
What do you think we should do?
Well, I mean, it's like anything, it seems like you throw more money at it. Obviously, we need it, but we're never gonna have enough money. There's always gonna be something, or it seems like it's the taxpayer that has to take all the hit. I think teachers need to give too. They have contracts that were good, and they refuse them. I mean, it's always the taxpayer, the taxpayer that takes a hit, over and over again. It's the point where, no, I, put it after one. I'm gonna continue to do it now.
And I understand that, I respect that. Where are we gonna be able to pull this off?
I know, it's, it's tight, but we've been doing it every year, we've been increasing, increasing, increasing. I know we need the money, but it's always us that have to give, I mean, there has to be some give with the teachers, with the union, there has to be give there too.
You know, my philosophy, my family's philosophy, it has to hurt both of us a little bit in order to be a good contract. So I'm hoping there's a little give here, we have a little give, and we're gonna get this done.
Well, it's not gonna end this year, next year it's gonna be, oh, we gotta go above the Saul. I, a couple of years ago, Dan, he said, I'll do it this year, but we won't do it the next. I remember that, at least probably once or twice, he said that, well, the last two years, we gotta go above the Saul. I mean, it's, it's every year.
And that's your, we're gonna vote in the IU for the highest, highest tax increase in the whole IU.
It's not gonna end, I mean, and I understand, we need the money. I can understand that, but it's, it's never, I mean, stating grace is that the legislature, um, I'm not sure if they didn't already move in the House, maybe it was the Senate. Um, the lower property taxes, forty percent increase. Also looking at retirement and the form finally. So if that actually passes, that's gonna help us tremendously next year.
If they want in the House, it takes ten years to figure it out, or something like that.
At least they're moving, starting, trying something.
We have, um, Matt made a, I guess he made a motion that we consider a vote, that needs a second, if you wanna do that.
I mean, I based him on one's voting, reconsider the vote now, yes. We have the money to change it. Number changes.
We need to vote on the amended K, is that correct? Does everybody understand what the amended K is? The amended K is now actually I with one, two, and
Amy and Dave, did you get that?
I don't get much after ten o'clock.
And we still got a long way to go yet tonight too, so. Okay?
Go, please. Gray?
No.
Fitzler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
No.
Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
England?
No.
Five-four, yes.
Will please everybody think long and hard yet until it's done. All right, that's the end of management, moving on to program committee, Amy, please.
I'd like to move right to May. Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? Not, proceed to vote, please.
Fitzler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
All in favor.
I'd like to move item C, and I'll say I have the text, oh, I'd like to move by the C. Oh, geez, I skipped right by it. B, it's after ten o'clock, where's B?
Right after ring?
Oh, my word, I'd like to move item B.
Thank you. Discussion? Vote?
Sal?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fitzler?
Yes.
All in favor.
I'd like to move item C.
Thank you.
I have the text here, if anyone wants to see it, I haven't, um, this is tentative of options, and everyone's taking
Anybody wants to take a look at chemistry textbook, Amy's got it. Any other discussion? Roll call?
How?
Yes.
Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Warner? Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fitzler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
All in favor.
I'd like to move item B.
Discussion?
Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fitzler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
All in favor.
I'd like to move item B.
Second. Discussion?
Roll call up. Martel?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Fitzler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lung?
Yes.
All in favor.
I would like to move item H, and Principal Keener is extending the invitation for us, as we mentioned the night, for there's two S. Oh, that's G, I mean, the G.
Okay, well, let's, we need a second for the first step.
Let's just figure out if an added four will change. Let's just take it as an editorial change, just say yes.
Second.
Discussion?
Hold on, we'll just take an editorial change for G.
Okay, can we go to an F first?
Yeah.
Okay. Arnold?
Yes.
Aylin?
Yes.
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
All in favor.
And as at per editorial change, I'd like to move item T, which is the basketball coach reference.
Discussion?
Is Mr. George going to be a teacher here also?
So, we don't have any positions.
Any other discussion?
Where, where is he from? I don't know anything about him, except there was a flip in the Penn Live or what the daily news online.
He comes from Pine Grove. He's the head, well, he is the head basketball coach here at Pine Grove. He led them to two District 11 titles, a league championship, and he's there in the semifinals in the state playoffs.
He from Elko first?
Yes, he was.
What was the, what was the issue at Elko? I understand from that that he left there under not great circumstances.
The story that I got was that he was passed over for the head job for somebody in the house. And I did talk to the athletic director at Elko, and he said he would hire him again, so.
Again, he's not being considered for a teaching position in our school system.
I don't think he has certification or anything. Does he, John?
Nothing that's been advertised.
I know it was on the list, but could you tell us who the hiring committee was in front of, so?
Myself, Mr. Keener, Ken Bass, Billy Darrow.
I will vote for him to be basketball coach, but if he comes up in front of this board as a teaching position, I will not be voting for that.
I would be happy to have a coach as a teacher.
He had a coach as a teacher.
I know, I'm just saying.
And if that's the case, then we're going to be creating a position as a football coach that we could use for an English teacher.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I would not support creating a position.
That's all I'm saying.
Any further discussion? Mary? England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
All in favor. Anything else, any other programs? And we move on to property and service. Glenn?
And move to item A.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
All in favor.
Item B?
Second.
Discussion? Vote? Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
All in favor.
Move item C?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote? Sal?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
All in favor.
Move item?
E.
E, you've got to put a check mark there before it.
Discussion? Roll call vote? How?
Here?
Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
All in favor.
Move item E?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote? Lung?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
Here?
All in favor.
Move item F?
Second.
Discussion? And Glenn, I believe this was, or the attachment was available, did everybody have time to look at it? And we discussed it pretty thoroughly in the classroom. Any discussion? Roll call vote? Martel?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
Yep.
Lung?
Yes.
All in favor. Anything else you have to add, Glenn?
No.
Okay. Superintendents report, and we do want to hear the highlights, but you don't have to be real robust.
You have a long list of items that are there. Most important things are all the federal programs we've used. All requirements are complete and compliance, and numerous alerts and things that have gone on otherwise. Do it, and I'll answer any questions.
Moving on to reports of representatives, Dan?
We meet next week, we've been in negotiations with the professional staff, it's going slow.
Okay, and I have the IU 13, and we have not met since we had our last meeting, so I gave a report at that time. I've been sending the updates that I've been receiving from Pennsylvania School Board Association. I hope everybody's been appreciating and taking time to read them. I've also included a couple from our, the IU 13's executive director, Brian Barnhart. And I think he says things, he says it well, and it's easy for us to understand, and you want to continue to receive those too. Okay?
That was, that was good when you started today.
He's, he's good. He puts it in really good terms. Moving on to the Allen campus hack, and the to be determined. Glenn, you had been our representative, correct? And you wish to step down from that?
I think hack doesn't want one at the moment.
And then that's my next question. So, will you just hang tight with that for a while?
Yeah, until they, until they ask for it.
Okay.
Wasn't, Glenn, wasn't that the last thing you said?
Yes, the last, the last time that I talked to them, they, they were restructuring and deciding what to do. But it is a great, if you get the opportunity, you're in a great spin.
Okay, so you didn't step down as a time factor, you stepped down because they didn't want, they didn't want you?
No, no, I stepped down, I stepped down because, I stepped down because I could not, they always meet at noon, it's a lunch meeting, and I could no longer do that. When I approached them later, a couple of months later, to say, hey, you know, or whatever, and then, at that time, they said, well, at this time, just hold off until we decide what we're going to do. They might want somebody that I have not contacted in several months.
Thank you. Dave? Steve?
I would love to say no report. I would love to say no report, but our president has given us too much information. And I do want to share a couple of things. With the IU monthly meeting of the superintendents, they feature a new obligation that schools provide, all students with the ability to anonymously report bullying, harassment, and inappropriate behavior to school leaders. And I think that some of our community that have spoken about that, I've talked to my children, and thankfully, it's not widespread. But I thought this was a brilliant idea, that that was a possibility, that it could be presented by the Elko superintendent. They call it Stop It. Accountability and transparency, and Wednesday last week, they sent approved a, an idea which I think would be great to open, open our closed-door collective bargaining meetings with the union to the public. We have been very, very close to a contract in the last couple, three years that I've been part of the union, and fell away, and if we would have it open to the public, I think that'd be great for the public to see what is really going on behind our closed doors. Wolf, Governor Wolf, has not commented on that, so I'm not sure how far that will go, but I think that'd be great for the transparency for our community to see what is actually going on in our negotiation meeting. They're looking at the school performance profile. IU were involved in going to that meeting with our Secretary of Education in the state, and they're looking at redoing, redoing the school performance profile. As we've heard, we've heard about the possibility of the homeowner's tax. Kind of the bill that's out there now is a 40% to 60% tax decrease for our property tax. The governor's bill is proposing possibly 50% of decrease in property tax. Really no idea which direction that's going to go, but that would be an incredible help. Pension overhaul, that's something that is being talked about, not necessarily for current employees, but for all new employees. And at least they're talking about it, and that's, hopefully, our superintendent was on the cutting edge of that. Last year, two years ago, trying to see that happen, and offered himself up as being a person that would be willing to give up. If I remember correctly, they didn't want to hear what he had to say. And that information is, is recorded, if anybody would like to see a superintendent's presentation concerning pension overhaul. That's all I have.
Okay, and I'll continue to keep sending you stuff, because I know it seems like if you think you're being overloaded, I'm not even sending you everything that I get. And I think it's very important that we keep ourselves well-educated and strong. Amy, you got anything from the committee?
May 18th, next meeting, August 4th is national layout, lots of stuff on the line.
Okay, anything we missed on reports? Anybody have any new business? Okay, if not, right before we adjourn, there's dates there that we should be remembering, and right now, does anybody feel that we need to meet next Tuesday? Since it is a possibility? Oh, I actually have a work meeting too, something, but.
We're supposed to interview our solicitors, which is one day, days of.
Okay, I can give you an update. From the information I got on 27th, or 24th, that evening, I have a request, so I have three of them lined up. The one firm, Haylen, Haylen Keel, anyway, they have an obligation on the 27th. They were wondering if they'd consider doing another night. They said I would ask the folks, and we're all together tonight. They said if not, maybe they could try to arrange something. I haven't set up starting at 6 o'clock on the 27th.
And?
Well, nevermind, I want to add these. We're putting it in front of RFP, let's see how it's going to be, if we have a real issue.
I think it's hard to get all of us together if I say that it's the 27th.
Looking down at the rest of the dates, we have a middle school recognition coming up. We have a high school recognition coming up. I hope somebody, I cannot make it there that evening. That would be there, but next Monday. Sorry, I slipped around there. Okay, so we don't need the following Tuesday, so then the next time we see you should be June 2nd for committee meetings. Graduation and Josh Aldis' times are supposed to show up for June 3rd. Anything I'm missing?
Tuesday?
Well, so soon it'll be Wednesday.
Almost Wednesday.
We have negotiations closing at 6 o'clock.
This is for classification, do you want me to tell the firm then that this is what it is, and if they can make it great if not? Okay. So, that'll be the 27th, that's in our schedule.
Okay, anything else we need to announce before we adjourn into executive center? All right, you can do it.
I can email, which ones?
All of you.
I can particularly, I mean, if, if anything, really, I need to get your message. I can, we could email, I can, you know, call, but.
Hey, Channing, yeah. I can even do it with your voice, stop it, boy. Well, I usually try to get that.
I just want to make sure they're going live by wire, I'm sure.
And then all the stuff, this part, this is the normal dissertation.
I would actually do that.
You're a good guy. Overconfused, all of these different budgets.
Are there any extras?
All you had to do was say, take the teacher out, because all the other things was. So, it was always just a question of, you could take out the teacher. You really belabored what everybody.